Good evening, I'm Ken Swanton, I'm the Vice Chair of the Zonework field. Thank you for walking in this evening. We'll start by taking a roll. So, say you're a president. This is the lot.
Here.
Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
Mr. Shagman.
Here.
The scout.
Here.
And Mr. Swanton is here, so we have five members, these will be the five voting members tonight. We still expect that Michelle Sotek to join us, but she's not her turn to do it. Oh, she's doing this thing. Mr. Shagman, could you give your answer?
Yeah, same here, thank you. Here.
Hello?
Okay, I can hear you now, that's very hard to hear anyone there.
Yeah, I'm not hearing anyone in the audience.
Yeah, I'm not either, okay, yeah, I'm not either. Mister, is Doug Jack?
Yes, yeah, I'm the third presenter.
Okay, so you and I can hear each other, but the people in the room cannot hear us?
Can you hear me?
Oh, now we hear you.
Now we hear you, it was silent for a very long time.
I have a microphone that I'm talking into, the other people were just trying to say yes. So we'll be careful now to talk into our microphone now.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, we're not hearing anything again. If it's my turn to speak, if someone could just talk on a microphone so I know.
It is your turn to speak.
Aha, okay, yeah, we didn't hear any setup, would you like for me to walk through the slideshow?
Yes, you can probably see the slides on the Zoom call, they are up and you can walk through them now.
Yeah, perfect. All right, thank you all for letting us present, my name's Doug Jack, I'm the architect and the homeowners should be there in person as well if this Zoom gets too wonky. So the property that is, that we're presenting is highlighted in red here, these are two site plans showing the the current condition. It's in a strange block that historically had a brewery in it, so it doesn't have just sort of typical half lot depth plots on it, ours is a smaller square as you can see against Forrester Street, and there's two kind of extra deep lots just behind us there. And if you look at the image on the right, you can see it's primarily forested and rear yards for those adjacent neighbors. If you can go to the next slide, please, Caitlin. These are the views of the existing house from all four corners, so the upper left is as you approach on Forrester Street from the side away from the ocean, and on the right is closer to the ocean, walking up the hill. The bottom corners from the back rear of the house, and then the lower right photo is the area that we're proposing to add a single-story sunroom to. Caitlin, if you could go to the next photo. This is the street view showing the current context for where we're proposing this, this sunroom. And Caitlin, if you could keep advancing. So the, this site plan is showing the existing house in the single line hatch on the left there, and then the proposed sunroom addition in the X hatch on the right there, this little darker tone. And you can see that the property line is that outer dash line, there's an inner dash line that is, that shows the setbacks. And what's left of the setbacks is really right at the center of the site for the homeowner. They have an existing bay window that you can see drawn on the floor plan of the existing house, that looks from the kitchen out to the yard, they have an existing deck as well that's to the east side of the house and up against the street. And then a fence against the street edge. And what we're proposing to do is put this sunroom towards the back of the lot. It's the most kind of secluded portion of the site because the rear yard has you know, kind of forested yards with the neighbors behind the fence. And place, and it allows the yard, which is, which is really quite luscious and open and visible from the street to remain open, rather than kind of placing the addition itself in the, in the center of the action and then only having kind of peripheral green space around it. So by, by putting it in the back here and doing it at that angle, you preserve the open view out to the yard and the green space there, it also makes it a lot more subservient from the street, we already presented to Historic, this is in the demolition control overlay district, so we presented to them and the intent here is also to keep it away from the street front and, and not alter the streetscape so much. Caitlin, if you could go to the next slide. This is showing the proposed addition from the yard direction, so you can see on top the existing house elevation on the bottom is with the proposed addition and how we're maintaining the bay window that looks into the kitchen, the sunroom will attach to the the kitchen and flow off of that on the interior. The ridge line is designed to align with that existing single-story volume. And the, the fascia will also align, and then the windows are two over two double hungs to synchronize with the historic primary house on the, at the front of the lot. Caitlin, next slide. This is the view from the rear of the house, which is really the only other angle you can see it from, and on top again is before and below is after. And then next slide, this shows the addition frontally from all three sides. Yeah, here. So you get, get a feeling, the two sides facing the yard are very open with the double hung historic windows, and then the third side towards the rear lot line is, is just clapboards to match the existing house. And that, that allows that rear portion of the house to be, you know, kayaks and things like that, keep it off the streetscape. And then last slide, Caitlin. This shows the proposed addition more three dimensionally, so you get a feel for it, so on top is the existing house, both from the side yard and then the right view is from the back of the house. And then below is with the proposed addition and how it's it's kind of angling outwards to embrace the yard and that existing deck, deck space and preserve the openness of the lot. So the relief that we're asking for today, as was outlined in the memo that came, that I did with the packages to, Caitlin, if you could go back to page four. The existing house is fourteen foot four inches from the rear lot line, and where the addition would decrease that to eight feet, whereas the zoning setback is twenty-five feet as you can see. Thank you. And I don't think I'm here, if anyone's speaking, I can't hear anything.
Pick up the microphone to make sure you can hear, but thank you, Doug, appreciate it. Now, at this point of the hearing, we ask for any input from anybody in the room who might like to make any comments either for or against or ask questions or say anything you'd like. Okay, I don't see anybody. As far as somebody online, I think the only person online just spoke, right? Okay. So we'll close that portion of the hearing, and now we go to the questions of the board. And we'll start with anybody here who'd like to ask a question, would somebody like to ask a question?
I'll ask questions just one. And hopeful that they can, because apparently it doesn't work. Okay. Mister Jack, could, could you just walk through sort of the decision-making process as to go with the angle appendage as opposed to something coming off at a ninety-degree angle, I think you, you started to get there during your presentation, but I just wanted to understand more as if that's something that you sort of toyed with and rejected, or how you got to that nine, or that sort of forty-five degree angle?
Yeah, definitely, and thanks, I could hear that perfectly. So we, as I do with any client, I always start by, you know, casting the net very wide, and we looked at a whole bunch of schemes. The, the client had come to me with the, you know, the program or the directive was to create a a single-story sunroom with lots of windows, the existing house is, is quite old in the historic district, so it's kind of closed in small spaces and small windows. So we're creating something that's a little more bright and airy to go out and have your coffee or read a book. They love their current yard, they have an extra wide lot for this block, and they love their deck that's there against the street. So they didn't want to hinder that too much. The other schemes that we looked at took the kitchen, which I pointed out has that bay window there, and just bumped it right out, and they didn't love it because it's it takes over the yard rather than celebrates the yard. And then another scheme we looked at was a similar proportion but orthogonal to the existing house. And similarly, it, it created quite a large gap at the rear of the lot against the fence, that fourteen, four and a half dimensions, and that becomes sort of wasted space as it's it's now between the house and the fence and doesn't get sun, et cetera, and leaves very little green space, so this was a scheme that tried to both connect, oh, and then lastly, I know it's hard to see the floor plan, it's ghosted, but the kitchen doesn't extend all the way to the north edge of the house, there's a mudroom that's the first eight or so feet and a laundry room. So, so we needed to connect this room to the kitchen, and that was pulling the addition further south on, on the existing footprint, so by doing the angle, we were able to tap into the kitchen and have a nice flow for the public there, but also not take over the yard, rather, rather create sort of an armor and embrace around it. Lastly, it, the view angle now, because the angle, the primary glass is on that twenty-one foot eleven long face there and a door down to the yard. If that was straight to the house, it kind of just stares straight at the side of the deck in the house rather than looking out at the the landscape. And then the end of the, the room, which has a wood stove on it, likewise, rather than staring straight at the neighbor to the right of this image, it looks kind of at an angle at the trees in the backyard. So I, I know it seems kind of quirky at first glance, but when we looked at multiple options qualitatively, this one just felt like the best resolution of the considerations.
Thank you, Mister Jack. Follow-up questions to that is, did you, did you guys canvass the neighborhood to, to see what was the response from, from the abutters?
I'm gonna, if Sharon is there in person, I'm gonna let her speak to that because I believe she did some of that.
Yeah, thank you, thanks, I'm Sharon Coleman.
Could you come to the microphone so people can hear you that are on there?
Or this guy?
Thank you. Could you introduce yourself and say your address?
Hi, I'm Sharon Coleman, and my address is eight Forrester Street. I've been working with Doug to help these plans, and this is Judith Paul, my partner. Yeah, so we did talk to our neighbors, especially Heather Verneux, who's on that right-hand side. As Doug was saying, the first few plans, we would be basically looking into her kitchen, kitchen and living area, so that's why at first we thought this design was a little funky. But as, as Doug said, it did allow us to view more of the garden space and also give Heather plenty of privacy without you know, the viewpoint, the windows being straight towards her kitchen and living area. And then we talked to neighbors on the other side and just said, you know, they, it's very, very denying to the rest of the neighbors, the neighbor that posted, I thought, sounded.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Swanton. Anyone would like to go next?
Mister Jack, can you? First I'll ask. I couldn't find the letter from the Historic Commission, is it in the file? Or was there one?
We just had the hearing a couple of weeks ago, Caitlin, I don't know if if that's something that gets added to the ZBA file after we were approved.
Okay. I can't find.
But I did send the text of the decision into the paper.
Okay. Well, I'll drag it down, but Mister Jack, can you just briefly tell me that the what happened in front of the Historic Commission, how that was sorted out and what the decision was?
Sure. As you probably know, it's a pretty lengthy process there in Newburyport, so there was a first vote which said it was a historically significant house, and I had a different presentation that had a lot more kind of historic maps and things that helped, you know, inform that vote. And then the second vote, Caitlin, you might have to fill in here, was to say that there would be a demolition delay, and then there was a third vote to overrule the demolition delay and say that we could proceed right away and not wait the, the waiting period. And a large part of that was the modest scale and the fact that it was back from the street front, so it's really preserving the public domain and the historic character of the street. And then secondly, it's structurally, it's, it's entirely independent of the primary house, so if in thirty years, you know, someone says, let's take that down, we, Doug Jack made a big mistake. The existing house is entirely preserved, this would be on sonotubes, it would have one small four-foot wide opening to connect the kitchen to the space, and then the roof would be overframed on the other one, so it wouldn't land on the structure, they would just sort of cosmetically go over for, for the asphalt to be continuous.
I have no.
Anyone else? Yes, Miss Shagman?
Can you hear me? One of my questions is, one of the things that we need to satisfy is that the, the plans will not be detrimental, substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. And I was wondering, you mentioned that it is a historic neighborhood. Do you have any pictures or photos, I'm just looking at the aerial plan, just kind of demonstrating that this, this structure would, would fit in well with the neighborhood?
Yeah, I think Caitlin, even slide one from, if you mean truly aerial from above sure shows the proportion of roof lines and spaces within the house, it's not dissimilar to the back volume of the existing house, which steps down in scale as you you know, the, the primary house and the hundreds of years ago is the two-story large structure that's prominent, and then as you go back, 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 back with additions, they get smaller, smaller. So we, we matched the scale of the rear add-on portion of the house. We're very much so using the language of the neighborhood, and that was the focus of the historic presentation, so we were matching the ridge line, the fascias will align, the clapboards will be the same spacing and paint, paint color. The corner trim will match, the two over two windows will be historic profile and have matching colors. So I think it's, I think it's going to feel very consistent with the historic character of the neighborhood, that really Caitlin, if you go forward two slides to page three, really it's not, it's not going to be very visible from the public domain, this image is just off of Google Street View, so it's, it's higher than the natural eye is, it's up on top of a car, you know, like seven, eight feet off the ground. And when you're walking on the sidewalk, that fence and shrub there pretty, pretty well entirely block your view, and then when you're on the other side of the street, you're kind of just going to see that the fascia is there and the historic windows, and so I think it's going to feel very sympathetic to the, the fabric of the neighborhood.
Mister Shagman, Miss Shagman, do you have any questions? Yes, Mister Jack?
I have one, I, I guess it goes to this photo actually. In driving by, it looks like there's quite a bit of vegetation and a fence between eight, and I think the neighbor is six, is that six?
Four. Yeah, I don't know what happened to six.
Okay, and you know, there was, there was a lot of discussion about the way that the addition is rotated instead of being ninety degrees, forty-five degrees, so you're not looking into her kitchen. Can you look into her kitchen? It looks like you've got the floor galore. You wouldn't, you wouldn't see that house from your house ever, would you?
Depends on the time of year.
Because my biggest concern is you're reducing the rear yard setback from fourteen feet to eight, that's a huge jump. That's really tight, especially when the code is twenty-five feet. You're, you're down to a very, very small percentage of that. And if you turn the addition ninety degrees, this all goes away. You stay at fourteen feet. Just, that was all I had.
Thank you. Maybe you wanted to comment? Oh, I'm sorry, was there a comment? Yes, would you like to reply to that?
Yeah, I was, I was only going to point out, if you go to slide one, it shows the aerial of the neighborhood and the unique, the unique structure of the lots on this, this block, so you can see how miniscule our lot is and the adjacent lot, and then how elongated the two lots behind us are. Is, I think, if there was a, if, if their lot was the same as ours and they were also only eight feet up the fence, I, I never would have proposed this design because it would be actually uncomfortable, you're too loud, people are looking at each other's the back of your building. I think part of what that made us excited about this option is the fact that it is really luscious back there, you have a good hundred-plus feet before you hit the neighbor, and then it's the neighbor's shed, it's not even that a space that they use very frequently, so it felt pretty innocuous to to lose the six feet off the rear, given how short our site is, and to, to gain that by having the or to, to gain the benefit of maintaining the green space of the yard, both for the homeowner but also for the neighborhood, not, not smushing everything right up against the street, but having it set back and, and the foliage remain.
All right, thank you. I don't see your hand, though, do you have any?
No, I don't have any questions that haven't already been asked, thank you.
You're welcome. Does anybody else on the board have anything else? If not, we'll close that portion of the hearing, now we go into deliberation, where we go around the table and we deliberate as to whether this meets the criteria for a special permit, and whether each person thinks they may support this or not. So, who would like to begin?
I'll give it a go.
You ready?
Well, we can start with the easy one, and that is there's, there's there's no new non-conformity presented here. So then the question arises as to whether, there certainly is an intensification of an existing non-conformity. And as Mister Shagman said, it is not insignificant going from fourteen, which is eleven feet. Eleven feet, less than what is required under the zoning ordinance, then we're going to eight, so that is, that is a rather significant intensification, and it certainly captures my attention. Secondly, I, I think at, at first blush, the the kind of canting of the, of the proposed improvement is somewhat jarring, but actually, as I look at it, I think my initial desire to see perfect symmetry is somewhat removed here, and I kind of like the look of it, actually. I think it's kind of a rather creative design. So, the question in my mind is whether or not the intensification of that side yard from fourteen to eight constitutes a is, is, is a substantial detriment to the neighborhood based upon size, scale, and massing height. I first start by concluding in my own mind that the the improvement itself is, is not inconsistent with the neighborhood in terms of size, scale, and massing. It's rather modest in size, and certainly fits within the, within the neighborhood in and of itself, so I'm left with the notion of how rigorously do we want to adhere to the mandate in the zoning ordinance to be mindful of any intensification of a non-conformity. All that being said, this is a stream of consciousness effort here, as you might imagine. I come to the conclusion that I can support this, I, I, I kind of like the design and I believe it's it fits with the neighborhood, I, I think it's, it is a close call for me because I think that's an intensification that is I think greater than we typically see, there's typically efforts to minimize any intensification and I know architects have worked hard to do that, I understand, Mister Jack, what you said there, but all in all, I am supportive of this.
Thank you for the analysis. Who would like to comment next?
Um, I can support this proposal, I, I understand the concern about the, the change in the setback, but I do appreciate, you know, looking at the maps and, and hearing from the architect about the distance of the, of the back lot from, from the property line, and I thought I heard him say that that is forest land. It doesn't look like anything will be, you know, coming up close to the property line from the other side. And I do understand that, you know, the desire to, to not be closer to the closest neighbor in, in creating that design, and so for that reason, I don't, I don't find it detrimental to the neighborhood.
Thank you. Would you like to go next?
I'll echo the sentiments of Mister Bennet and Miss Scow. It is a close call, but I think, you know, under the circumstances, and as Mister Shagman noted, there is a lot of vegetation. It looks like there's a lot of vegetation that extends back in between the, the eight Forrester Street lot and the lot that abuts at Onashlan Street, so I think given that, I can also, I can also support your project.
Well, thank you. And these two of you, Mister Shagman?
I'll go next. I still have trepidations with the, you know, how close it gets to that very lot, we have seen you know, other applicants come to us with similar you know, if you will, jumping into the, the setback. Some of them have worked with us to, to reduce that. Some, some pulled their application and come back and moved buildings, rotated buildings, made them smaller. I don't know if this one requires that because there's, there's nothing behind it, where it's where it's, you know, that lot behind it is so long. And if that neighbor, I guess, had complained or was here, said something, that would weigh, weigh heavily. So with that said, I, I'll agree with the rest of the board and, and I can support it.
Well, thank you, Miss Shagman, would you like your comment?
Yes, I think it's not inappropriate to provide this relief, and I have no objections to doing so.
Thank you. You know, my own feeling is, I kind of agree with some of the comments here, that when you go from fourteen point four feet all the way down to eight, and you're supposed to be at twenty-five, that's a big jump, that's a big ask. And if that abutter, as Mister Shagman said, was here complaining about it, the one picture you're approaching on, if he was complaining, it would be tough for us to support this. Because this is a major intensification, you could just like, not quite, at quite such an angle, that you only went to ten, not all the way down to eight. But I will say, you know, having walked by there, it's, you're lucky to have such a wide lot, you can kind of tuck it over there. Also think the architect did a very nice job with the drawings.
Also think the architect did a very nice job with the drawings. Uh this is easy to conceptualize with the before and after pictures. So even, you know, like I said, if they were jumping from the back, I'd have an issue, but without that and with the woods back there, I I agree with my colleagues and I can, with some reservations, I can support your proposal.
So with that, sounds like we're unanimous. So would somebody like to make a motion?
Yes, I will move that the application uh for special permit for nonconformities application. C N C twenty three dash seventeen for a Forrester Street.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been seconded. All right, so I guess we just go around the table. Um that's a good one. Uh well, yes. Mr. Bennet? Yes. Mr. Shagman? Yes. Mr. Scow?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And that makes it unanimous, but for nothing, it is approved. Thank you. All right. That ends our hearings tonight. That just gets us to our little business meeting where the first topic is to approve our minutes. Hopefully, people have seen the minutes of June twenty seventh.
I had one um I I had one suggestion with respect to the minutes. Um before we go to the uh executive session, should it be reflected that I left?
Are you referring to the minutes of the minutes?
No, I'm referring to the minutes of the uh of the public hearing.
Yeah, I think that probably does make sense. Yeah, so we'll have that modification in the minutes of June twenty seventh, Mr. Bennet. Recuse himself and left. Are there any other uh changes to the minutes? Well, as amended, if someone would like to move that we approved it?
I'll make that motion.
And is there a second?
I'll second. Mr. Shagman?
It's been seconded. All right, good. There's no discussion, I assume. So all in favor, just say aye.
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 It is unanimous. Uh is there anybody opposed? Are you, or or okay, it's unanimous, I'm sorry. All right, that gets us to other updates from the chair or planning director. Does the planning director have any updates?
Uh sorry, the the only things that I would, the only thing I actually think I would mention at this point is the uh progression of short term requirements. Um is the, I think it's the eighth uh zoning hearing. We have the focal zoning hearing. We have scheduled between the late where this council discussed that matter uh during the focal hearing to have years now, uh to try to find the right, you know, sub regulations for that use, uh with varied opinions. Um that the most progress should be. Uh so that being the case, uh we are planning on a joint public hearing uh again on August the 16th. Um I I think what we're essentially dealing with tracking this is the reason I mentioned this, of course, is because you're working on uh there's a primary rule interviewing applications. Um the under this ordinance, see if you want to comment or at least individually track, you know, with that discussion going. Uh obviously, the committee will run via hearing um to present the same proposal that is last minute the council back and it's covered, it's out there right now um of zoning. Uh the licensing piece is not been updated yet, but that's also the council, so that the license department's way of the council. Uh and I think the intention of the council, uh uh the committee chair, it may be to have a joint uh discussion after the, after the hearing, the planning board on the sixteenth. Uh and I assume uh receive the same report because the ordinance has been modified. They're really just trying to reset the clock for the amount of time the council has to pack under it. Um they uh ran out sometime after the budget cycle to have a set of hearings and work on dates uh to work. So um you hear by re-advertising, there's going to be seven o'clock tonight is, so after August sixteenth, the planning board closes the hearing that night. Uh an issue there, I presume, similar or exact, a report that just issued very soon, very recently. Um again, just advisory opinion, that's what this only changes uh should maybe your aspect or provided by the trust. Uh but whether the council uh adopts anything, um the uh city council will probably be uh as it can be the whole municipal council uh to discuss both the zoning and the licensing pieces, because you may recall there's some integration of of those rolled out as to how short or long they are. So if you have any tracking that, I'm sorry, that was wrong with it, but if you have anything uh you're interested tracking that or commenting on that at all, you might be in the board or if they're involved with uh reviewing those uh here, uh just wanted to let you know.
So I'm just per clarification. So we discussed this a couple of months ago, quite a while ago. It sounds like it hasn't changed. They're just resetting the clock. So we really don't need to study the new proposal because there's not a new one. Basically, just resetting the clock.
Yeah, I think that's an important point. So it's really about resetting the time, the council has to act on the new words. It might have been a much higher timeframe, reaching consensus. Um you know, we've been probably wanting more meetings in time in the summertime usually provides.
Does anybody have?
Yes.
Is the uh is the sixteenth meeting open to the public?
Oh, yes.
We could attend. It's a year.
That's correct.
We wanted as
That's correct. Obviously, you know.
As citizens.
Correct, correct. Yeah, I mean, you wouldn't be speaking as a board unless you know confirms.
Yep, okay.
Um yeah, the it's open to the public. It'll be a hybrid meeting like this, uh where, you know, in this this room, um you have the that will set up, of course, to be audio and all this and sometimes always been good. Uh but um at any rate, uh to be public, so you're welcome to comment on it, at least while that, while again, again, uh it will probably be a continued discussion of this uh in the council forum. Uh this is really just, although it's um, you know, been quite a process the last couple of years discussing the same topic. Um it'll be the end of the planning board will potentially then I give this whole process and the back to this council for probably, I would back it more than what we uh where the council will set the parameters.
I I just wanted to go, I I went to the a hearing on this quite a while ago. I don't think it's changed much. And we had discussed the group.
Right.
Some of our concerns, and I shared them with the group, and they were, they were very, very attentive and very receptive. And a couple of city councillors actually talked to me several days later about it. So, you know, they're very, very receptive, but but it hasn't changed at all. I mean, I would encourage you to go if you'd like, but.
Yeah, or at least we could dial in, right?
Yeah, and you can tell, but I always say I'm a member of the Southern Department of Appeals. I think that's very valuable to you just not speaking to the board, we have discussed it lately, but
Right.
we could discuss it before. You can certainly reiterate what we said last time.
Yeah.
Since it hasn't changed. Uh is there anything else?
Uh I don't know, somebody has anything.
I certainly don't have anything else. So with that, I guess we'll keep promoting to adjourn. Let somebody else something. Anybody have anything?
What happens to the executives?
What happened, what happened, what happens to executives that did?
Uh yeah, sorry. So uh we'll actually be tacking on, being a company to uh, I was very nice one. Uh we'd have to do, I apologize, but we'll uh either close up here. If you have anybody remotely, uh we'll have another um sort of a separate Zoom, the executive session Zoom, uh if you happen to have any members remotely. Uh but effectively, we will be reviewing it, we know that it closes the executive session. Um obviously, those aren't uh maybe able to follow each other's litigation, it's going to resolve.
Yeah, we could have done that tonight. It was on agenda, we can stop, so we can't just bring it up now.
Right, right. It will, it's uh maybe obviously in the office, not having it sort of one of the next applicable or available agenda. Uh so we'll, but I have that.
Good. Well, is there a motion to adjourn? So
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And thank you. Seven, seven points. This is pretty good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right here.
Congratulations.